I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular board meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Narodowski.
Present.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Swain.
Present. Okay, any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Any items that any of the board members would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn, segmented by trustee and Graffia. Any discussion? All those in favor, I'm sorry, roll call.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Swain.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have minutes from the October 28th board meeting. You've had a chance to review them. Any questions or proposed changes to those minutes? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Moved by trustee Keenly.
Second.
Segmented by trustee Saturn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, presentations from Corkle Insurance. Dave, if you want to come up and discuss your proposal, please. Thank you.
My name is Dave Valentine with Corkle Insurance, literally walking distance from this office, down the road. I'd like to thank everybody for allowing me to have the time to be able to go through the proposal that we had put together for the township. I give just a little bit of background about myself. I've been in our insurance for probably over 20 years. My background basically has been all public entity insurance for the last 15. I've worked from everything from huge towns, huge cities such as the city of Juiliet, to the smallest little 500-person town and everything between it. As townships goes, I've had pretty much everything too, was small to big. It all, stuff they've been working on for quite some time now, so. My going back was with, actually is in the public administration world. I did, I went to Western Michigan, graduated with a public administration degree, then went into a few years of actually working in the public administration world, so I actually had, find myself as someone that actually has real-life experience on both sides of the docket, both as the insurance person and also as far as the administrative side. A little bit about Corkle Insurance, we are owned by two brothers, Paul and Luke Praxmeyer. I believe, I know Luke has been pretty prevalent in the community so far within Elk Grove and with the townships, a little bit well-known too. We've been established in Elk Grove Township for quite some period of time now, and we enjoy very much working in this area as well, too, so the locality is a plus for us. The program that we presented actually is, I'm assuming people have looked it over, we had two programs that we did put together. The first program was with Hudson Insurance. Hudson Insurance is an A-rated carrier, they're in excellent standing. They are not including the workers' compensation. Our plan would be if we were to take over the insurance for the property and casualty, we would be able to work with Illinois Public Risk Fund, which is the current workers' compensation provider. We actually do have about 100 public entities that we do work with, and I'd want to say about 95% of them are with Illinois Public Risk Fund, so we've had a very good longstanding relationship with the fund, and so I would not see why it would be any sort of issue to take over the insurance on that as well, too. The other program that we are proposing is with Travelers Insurance, which is pretty much a pretty well-known name. I believe it's still on the Dow Jones, if I remember right, so it's a very large company and very well-known. And between the two, they actually would provide the workers' compensation insurance with their program that they're offering. I would, I can more, I can go through the entire proposal with you, but I think everybody's reviewed it, so I'm kinda wanting to kinda get a gauge of whether or not you want me to go line by line the thing, or just be able to just give you the nuts and bolts and the highlights of the thing.
I've sat down in a separate meeting prior to this, and I went through it in detail with him, so I want to give the same opportunity for the board. Unless you want to just ask specific questions, or if you want Dave to read the highlights, it's up to you, but I've already had the opportunity, so that's why Dave's here, to give you the same opportunity. Thoughts?
Maybe just do the highlights.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. The highlights more or less are that we are offering both programs. I'll start with the Hudson program first, just because it's, we'll just go one by one, it's a little less confusing that way. The Hudson program, we, they were offering general liability insurance, auto, public officials, which includes the employment practices liability, and an umbrella policy, as well as the property policy. The property policy is gonna be covering the new facility at 600 Land Meyer. It has this, just it was contents of this address, and that's pretty much the highlights of what we're covering. I won't go through every single little supplement on it, but I do currently work with the program that you guys are currently with, which I believe is Illinois County's Risk Management Trust. There are some differences in the fact that, I believe their minimum deductible is higher than what our deductible is, so there would be some additional savings on a per claim basis of what we're able to offer. On the general liability, they offer, they have a deductible where we don't have any deductible. The property insurance, we're only offering $1,000 deductible. I believe their minimum is about, I want to say it's 1,500, but not seeing their proposal, I believe that's something you'd have to look into, but from knowledge of what their program is, I believe that's the case, too, as well. Full property is covered, the building at Land Meyer is fully covered, a little over $8 million, which was the limits and everything that we were quoting is what was given to us by Paul and off the current schedule, so I believe we are apples to apples as far as the limits of what you guys currently have on your current program. We also do include the equipment breakdown as well in that, as well, which basically means there's a boiler machinery loss, or an equipment breakdown that causes the fire or causes the loss, that would be covered as well under the property insurance. Liability, the general liability, the first $1 million is covered on the GL policy. The GL policy has no deductible, as mentioned before, and that basically would cover your slips, falls, anything else that would currently happen on that as well, too. The auto liability policy, $1 million as well, too. There is $1,000 deductible on the physical damage as well, that I believe will match to what you currently have. Crime insurance, we have $1 million of coverage on any sort of employee dishonesty claim. There's only $1,000 deductible on that. Forgery, there's a whole bunch of supplements. In all honesty, we probably have more coverage there than likely would be needed on a loss. A loss would likely be discovered before you would be hitting $1 million, I would guess, with the size of the budget that there is with the township. So there probably is more than a fair amount of coverage there as well. Your public officials liability insurance is $1 million with a $5,000 deductible. I believe that's an apples-to-apples quote with what you currently have. The claims made coverage retrodate is 12/119. That can be brought back, so there'd be no gaps in time coverage as far as whether there'd be a loss. We basically just would match the retrodate, that's on your current policy, they just quote that, because until they see the policy, they can't really throw the date on it, so at this point, that can be, that can be a change thing, so there'll be no gaps in coverage as well. The same goes true with the employment practices liability. It's $2,500 deductible. The defense costs are outside the limits, which means any sort of defense cost that would be incurred would be outside the $1 million, would be in addition to that, that would be covered for that as well. We're also offering cyber liability policy as well, too. Cyber liability right now, obviously, is one of the hot buttons that's out there, is, to be honest, that's probably one of the most places, most likely things people will see a loss. You're not collecting checks, you're not collecting money that's coming in to the township, there's not a huge exposure, but we are still offering $50,000 if something were to happen and we do need it covered, so the coverage is there. Through the auto schedule that's out there, as I mentioned, we went through the auto policy, but the vehicles should match up to what was given to us and what currently is owned by the township, they would all be covered as well. The umbrella liability, the umbrella insurance is $5 million, which sits above the $1 million for the underlying coverages of auto, general liability, public officials, employment practices, and employer's liability as well, too. So more or less, the township would have $6 million of coverage total, which right now in Cook County, it's about the highest limit, most of the carriers are willing to throw out there is a $6 million total limit, so it's, the two carriers that we've quoted are both pretty consistent with the full limits that are out there. Our second option is with Travelers Insurance. With the exception of a number of the deductibles that are a little different, the $1,000 still is on the deductible, so I'm not gonna go through all this, pretty much it is an apples-to-apples, everything is a million dollars, $3 million to add on the general liability. To be honest, it is actually pretty good, is a very good company. The cyber liability is a little bit less than what Hudson is offering, they're only offering a $25,000, but as far as the retention levels, everything is very close to the same, if not the same, as what we're offering Hudson. The auto insurance is handled the same way as well, with a $1,000 deductible. Everybody kinda looks at the back when we get to the premium summary, the last page, well, not the last page, the page that's in there, was the premium summary. The total with the Euclid insurance, which is actually, Euclid is the company that actually is running the Hudson Insurance program, it's the same thing. You can see that the total there is $38,036. That doesn't include the workers' compensation insurance. I wasn't privy to the, what the IPRF quote was, the Illinois Public Risk Fund quote was, but that would be included in there as well. Judging by what the expiring was, two years ago, I believe it was $16,000, $17,000, if I, the number that we saw on the audit was correct, so if you threw that in there, that would be with the numbers, but again, we don't control that piece of business right now, so I'm not able to throw the number in there since we didn't quote it. The Travelers Insurance, they actually did quote the workers' compensation at $15,078. Their total is $59,540. That would be the two numbers in there, so if you would look at apples-to-apples likelihood, the Euclid proposal is probably gonna be a little cheaper without seeing your workers' compensation renewal. What came in with IPRF, the likelihood is, that probably is a little bit of a lower number than the Travelers proposal would be. As far as our company, we do offer a number of services that are value-added, that are included in the proposal. We do have loss control services that we're able to bring out. Obviously, we're down the street, can be down here in five minutes if need be, but more or less, if there was anything that would be desired to be, we would look at, or provide OSHA training, anything like that to the workers, we can provide that. That's all within the cost of our proposal. We are not adding cost to anything such as risk control. We also offer human resources services. I know we don't have a, the township doesn't have a human resources officer, so it is kind of a value-added service, the sense that if there's a question about anything that's, involves human resources, we have someone on call that more or less can answer the questions, then and there, and that includes in our service as well. And the last thing that we actually do, we pride ourselves on, the fact that we do have an in-house claims people. The people that we employ, actually, with the, they all have minimally about 20 years of experience handling claims, or a person who handles the general liability claims and the property claims. He actually has 20 years' worth of tort liability insurance, so as far as looking at insurance for a municipality or a township, they, he basically is pretty well-versed on anything that's gonna come through the door. Ultimately, the claims handled by the company that you would pick, but our claim advocacy group, he's basically there to help the township out, and more or less, if there's a question or if you don't like the way the handle, the claims being handled, we have someone on staff that more or less can make sure that claim is handled most advantageously for the township itself, so he's there working for you and making sure that's done. They can do anything from trying to dispute a claim, all the way to trying to get money if we're, it's taking a long time to get payment on something, we have someone in place that can try to track down that money and not be, not leave that back on the township to go get that claim filed, so. That's pretty much it in that show, I didn't want to probably hopefully bore you too much with way too many details, because insurance is not probably the most exciting thing in the world, so I understand that as well, so if you have any questions, please feel free to fire away.
Okay, questions for Dave?
I hadn't heard of Hudson as a carrier before. Can you explain just a little bit more about them versus Travelers?
Hudson's, they've actually, they started out in the East Post a little bit more, as far as what they were dealing with insurance. They are big, as a sense as they are, if you look on the A and B S page, the capacity that you have is high as you can possibly get with the A-15 rating, but as far as public entity experience, they've been involved in public entity now for probably at least 15, 20 years. The group that handles them is actually out of ITASCA, and they're just a public entity group, and they actually, they have the pen, which means they are underwriting the actual policy, so they're someone local, actually, that is the underwriter that's looking at this account.
All right, well, thanks, Dave. Yeah, well, Paul can be in touch with you as soon as the board makes a decision, and we can let you know.
All right, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Okay, reports. The assessor submitted a written report.
She called and said, yeah, she called and said that the one thing she wanted to highlight was that, first of all, yeah, she's recovering from some modest surgery, but she's doing fine. She said she wanted to highlight that they've determined that approximately 10% of the, only 10% of the appeals have had any success, so they're very, gonna be very dependent on the board of review to be able to generate adjustments for the taxpayer. It appears to her that they, that they make in a real concerted effort not to approve appeals.
Yeah, I would encourage you to reach out to Connie with any additional questions. Okay, clerk's report, George.
I have the report there in the FOIAs from last month. Also, as Mike and Dick and I attended the educational conference down in Springfield, it was very, I found it very helpful for me. I thought there were, there were a number of sessions that I thought were very worthwhile, though I do agree that if you're going to attend, it's best to attend, and you can only go for a part of it Monday afternoon and Tuesday morning. The Monday morning is just the intro, is just the opening ceremony with the motivational speaker, and the Tuesday afternoon are the departments, or the trustees, the clerks, and those are not an educational session, per se. But I thought that the, and I have the sessions that I attended on, or some of them I did. Then the last thing is, I did speak to the League of Women Voters for Palatine. As you know, I had spoken to the League of Women Voters for Arlington a couple months ago, I spoke to the whole organization. This time, Camille Sullivan, who is not here tonight, but is their meeting watcher for Palatine, had asked that I talk to their group, but shortly beforehand, she informed me that she apologized, but it would just be the two senior members of their organization. And as you know, those are the two individuals who wrote an article supporting the McSweeney bill for the referendums to get rid of townships. So we had a very interesting session. I did a presentation, then we talked back and forth. I'm not sure I convinced anybody of anything, but it was a give and take, and I hope that we'll get an opportunity to talk to their whole group at some point, so.
Great. Any questions for George? Okay. Highway Department report, Art.
No, we're just continually start to move stuff over on Land Meyer, we're a little bit slow if it's not snowing or freezing, and we're probably right now at our low time of the year, so.
All right, any questions for Art? All right, thank you, Art. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the elected official reports as presented?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Graffia.
Second.
Segmented by trustee Narodowski. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. No correspondence? Okay, old business, so we need to, before we move into December, make a decision on the property and casualty and workers' compensation insurance. We heard from Alliant last month, Alliant Insurance, Mike Alicia last month, and now heard from Dave Valentine from Corkle. Wanted to open up the discussion, just to kinda give you an idea of the process. Corkle came to us last year, it was pretty late in the game, I think it was mid to late November. We renew on December 1st, so that was gonna be tight. We encouraged them to come back this past year if they wanted to provide a quote, they did, after they was shortly before the October meeting. We sat down, I think the Fri, bless you, the Friday before, so we didn't have time to bring it up in October, but wanted to give you an opportunity to compare the policies. We provided Corkle, not with dollar amounts, but with policy, so that, you know, Dave referenced apples-to-apples comparison, so that's what we wanted to see, what we have. We've always been comfortable with the levels of insurance that have been recommended, so we felt that that level of insurance would be a good amount. Those coverage levels and deductible amounts would be a good place to start for a quote. That being said, so with the first quote from Hudson with the Illinois Public Risk that would, trying to, and going off memory, I mean, it's $38,000 for Hudson Plus, I think it was just under $20,000 for the IP, IPRF, so that's gonna come in about $56,000. We ended up possibly slightly, a little, slightly more. The Travelers, you see from the quote there, came in at $59,540. Alliant Insurance was slightly higher at $62,163. So they're all close, so obviously, cost is always an issue, but relationships are important, too, in this area. So, you know, with Travelers, I just did some quick math, it's about $2,600 is the difference, and it's slightly higher, about $6,000 or so difference on the Hudson with the IPRF. So that's the cost, but you add in, you know, our relationship with Alliant and Mike Alicia over the years, and his knowledge of our systems and our properties, and the things that we need, our operation, you know, that's, that seems to weigh on the decisions or the things that I've thought about, and to be sure, Corkle is fantastic, their reputation is impeccable, but like I said, it's, the relationships, I've thought, important, but, you know, cost is something to be said there, too. So with that, I wanted to open up to the board for any discussion.
So it'd be about $6,000 more to maintain the company that we're.
That is, that would be correct. Yep, absolutely.
But the coverages are pretty.
Yeah, the coverage levels, the deductibles, pretty spot-on, as far as, and you heard Mike talk about, one of the big things ours is the cybersecurity, which, you know, Mike, you know, included as well. You know, I can, I can speak to, like I said, not having worked with them directly, Corkle Insurance, like I said, good reputation. We have had the ability to work with Mike specifically, with Alliant, and previously Mezaro, and things like that, and the service, all the service aspects are there, they're pretty typical of a insurance company to be able to provide those additional services, and Mike's been responsive. But it's, like I said, it's about cost, about comfort level and service providing, and that's why I thought, I said Corkle followed up, they, I thought they deserved to come in and at least present the opportunity or the option, and have a, let the board decide how we wanted to move forward, so.
How long have we been with Alliant?
I mean, there's been buyouts with Mezaro. I honestly don't know, I mean, it was before my, it's been before my time, I mean, that's, and that's been 15 years.
And we always worked with Mike?
Mike is, I came to the township in September of 2005, and Mike has always been the representative, yes.
So there's nothing, nothing occurred or anything that would discourage us from going with Alliant then?
Um, we've.
Service or coverage or anything like that?
No, very responsive. Coverage has always been right where it needs to be. We have a low, we've had low incidents of anything over the years, so our interaction with, you know, having to deal with claims typically has been with the buses. Fortunately, we've had very few of those, but always very responsive in the claims. Mike always takes ownership of making sure that we get all the information we need and gets us to the right people to handle those claims. As I said, he's always very knowledgeable, understanding our operation, and responsive, so. Nothing in that respect would say, you know, like I said, I thought Corkle, based on their reputation and their follow-up, should come, but there was nothing that sent me out to the market to say we needed to find somebody new.
Were they, did you say they were late last year, and that's why you said they could come this year?
Yeah, they were, we needed to renew December, and I think they came, it was, if memory serves, it was middle of November, thereabouts, so it was a little late in the game to get a proposal. They wouldn't have been able to get a proposal together in time, anyway.
And was there, were there, were there any, any differences in coverage that stood out to you, other than that Travelers was not as, their cyber security coverage was not as robust?
No, there is nothing, I mean, it was pretty, it was pretty standard across the board on all three quotes, I mean, what Mike brought to us from Alliant, and then both of these options here.
And there's no, no indicate, there's no, you had no, from your discussion, you have no indication that the insurers or the carriers here differ significantly in terms of their capacity or their reputations?
What was quoted by Corkle?
Well, just that between the ones, the different insurers that we're talking about here.
The three.
The three. Is there any no difference between the carriers?
No, but both, there's, you know, having been through, you know, at least these conversations over the last, more involved over the last six years, Cook County and the collar counties are more limited in public entity insurance, so that the ones, it seems that the ones that do come in and quote, actually, companies, for lack of a better term, are better positioned, they're healthy, robust, knowledgeable organizations, and they can afford to come in and take on some of the greater risk in Cook County, so they are solid companies from everything that we've been presented and I know, and I've learned from both Dave and Mike, these are stable and, stable companies. I wouldn't, wherever, wherever we want, let's put it this way, whatever way we decided to go, I would have no concerns about the insurer, making sure that we were covered in cases of any incidents.
But the only real difference with Travelers is the amount of coverage as far as cybersecurity?
Yeah, that's the only, right, right, and that's the first time we've been quoted that, that's this year as well, with Alliant.
Do you have a preference of what you'd like to do?
You know, I can speak to myself and my relationship with my working relationship with Mike, is just being very responsive, being patient and answering questions. It's kind of one of these things, you have two good companies, but it's the relationship you have, and not only that, he's very knowledgeable about, he was very involved with getting the insurance on the new building, making sure that we had all the coverage we need for replacement value, he's intimately involved with the appraisal there, so he's very, he's very hands-on and knowledgeable about the industry and about our operation. I've really enjoyed working with him because he has the answers, he knows where to get them if he doesn't, he's got a good team of people that work with him to take care of claims efficiently and effectively for us, so that, I mean, it stands out, I mean, that's... So that, I mean, it stands out. I mean, that's, I think if we, I think if we were at like, you know, pushing 12, 15, $20,000, I said it's, now we have to start taking a look, but 3,000, 4, 5, 6,000, it's like, okay, it's, it's almost more important to stick with what you know and stick with a carrier and a representative that knows your operation, in my opinion.
Especially at a time when we were undergoing certain big changes.
Your difference, your difference is 5% and 10%?
Right, on a small number. I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, it would be, yeah, in percentages, yeah.
I would think we keep the devil we know.
I mean, that's, that's what I, and like I said, if we wanted to set up, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's bad to go out to market, and when we get into the new building, maybe, you know, every couple of years, go out to market or every year. I don't, like I said, I just don't see a big enough difference here in price to sacrifice, you know, the individual who knows our operation and, and, you know, has, we've built that relationship. I think that's important. That's an important component. So, other thoughts?
I do think it would be good to get at least a couple quotes every year.
That's, that's fine. I mean, we, and there'll be people, and you know what? There'll always be people that would be willing to do that. And we can, I'm, you know, happy to do that. And so we can, I can talk to Paul and we can let, we can put out the call, you know, usually in, probably about late August, give individuals time to spend in September putting quotes together. That, especially in the new building, I think that would be prudent. But how about this year?
Are we in agreement? Then at this time, we would stick with the, with the company that we have.
I would feel comfortable with that.
Okay. Okay. Yep. Can I have a motion to approve Alliant Insurance as our property and casualty and workers' compensa- yeah, as our, as our carrier for this year?
Is that the motion?
I'm sorry. I stopped. I'm like, I was thinking about two different things.
Alliant Insurance is your, is your, you want to define that better as your property and?
Yeah. So approve Alliant as our carrier for our 2020 property and casualty and workers' compensation insurance. Okay, now I'm confused. All right. For 20, oh man, it's been a long day. All right. Approve Alliant Insurance as our 2020 property and casualty and workers' compensation insurance. So that's the motion. Yes, insurer, sorry. Yes.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Graffia.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Keenly. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn, trustee Nowodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Under new business, okay, so Pace came back to us with some changed language. Nothing that impacts the service agreements, the money we have to spend, or how they will operate. Just some legalese that went into some of the provisions, but nothing that substantively changes the, how we interact, how we interface, if there's any difference, or that our customers interface, so.
So substantive changes in the?
There was language changes, but nothing that changes how we interact with Pace, or how our residents who use the TRIP service interact, how they provide the service, the amount of money that we have to spend. None of that changes. They just had to change out some of the language in the contract.
It's usually reviewed by attorney?
What's that?
It's usually reviewed by attorney?
Yeah, and there was nothing wrong with the, there was nothing wrong with the language from, yeah, and then, yeah. There wasn't anything that Jason saw that was problem with the language from last, last month. This was just other language that they wanted to put in place.
Just on TRIP, is this a question? That is, are there four or five townships in this?
Five.
Five? And, and is it, it's administered though by a separate organization, and these five are, how does it, how does it work?
So the, the state funds, the grant essentially gets administered by Pace. So we, we come together as an entity and inform the agreement with Pace, but they, they actually administer. So they track the rides, they track the spending that's going on, and they dedicate those rides to the specific township so that we can track. Each township has $50,000 to spend, so they keep track of those rides and those dollar amounts and, and.
And they operate the program?
They operate the program, correct. So there's, if you've been, I know several of the trustees have gone to TRIP meetings. We get a representative from Pace that works specifically on this program and others, give detailed reports of what's going on, address any problems with the program, to allow residents to travel to specific places that have been outlined and identified across township boundaries and across regions.
Are there other TRIP programs, or is this TRIP program just these five townships?
This is just, this, this program is just the five townships that we cooperate with.
Okay, and Pace runs, runs it on a grant provided by the state?
That's correct. All right. Any questions about this updated language? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the revised Resolution 2019-10?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nowodowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nowodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, it's levy time. We have the Town Fund General Assistance Levy. That's ordinance 2019-04, and the Road District Levy, 2019-05. Just bring your attention to the bottom line figures, excuse me, for the corporate tax, the Town Fund Levy. All the levies I'm proposing stay the same. I think it's, would be prudent for us to reevaluate once we've been in the new building a little bit longer to make any changes moving forward. So the levy, the dollar amounts proposing would remain the same for the Town Fund, $2,228,471, and the General Assistance Levy at $442,719. And then for the Road and Bridge Levy, ordinance 2019-05, also proposing it stays the same And of course, which a portion of that goes to the municipalities that we overlap with.
$539,776.
Five, that's what we levy, and then we end up typically, it comes down to, I think it's about $340 or $350 in actual levy dollars that we actually get after we pay the municipalities.
So then it's status quo?
Yes, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not recommending an increase or a decrease. I think we're, we're in a sound financial position. Several years ago, the board got together and reduced the Town Fund Levy by 5%, the General Assistance by 13%, and those levels have worked out well. We've been able to manage our finances very well. And depending on what happens with the new building, we continue down this road, I mean, there could be another reduction. I don't see an increase in our future. It could potentially be a reduction based on any efficiencies we create in the new building. So any questions about these two ordinances? All right. Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2019-04, the Town Fund and General Assistance Levy?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Graffia. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nowodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Any discussion about ordinance 2019-05? All right. Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2019-05 RD, the Road District Levy?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Keenly.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nowodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Motion carries. I wasn't sure. The last item under new business, discussion and possible approval of refrigerator freezer unit for the food pantry. I sent out a memo to the board, I remember it was last week or the week before, outlining the current situation based on the cooler unit that was donated about a year ago. So we were, after having, as I laid out in the memo, after having asked the professionals that are storing the cooler, if we could cut the unit down if we needed to, or partition it for a freezer. We were told that we could. Having revisited it now, now that the superintendent needs to have all the specs to install it properly, that information has changed. It's not able to be cut down to fit in a space that's approximately two feet smaller than the width of the cooler. It can't be divided because the freezer needs, the freezer section would need additional insulation, and the cooler doors would need to be replaced. You'd need freezer doors, right? So it would be different. So running into those problems, you know, the superintendent did some of the legwork for us, as I laid out, and a, found a brand-new cooler-freezer unit that would serve our purposes as it relates to if we go in the direction of having a true full-service self-select food pantry. By that, just mean a grocery store functioning food pantry where individuals, clients can go up and down the aisles with a cart. Using the things, obviously limits and things will be placed, but grabbing the things that they know they'll eat and they'll use, hoping to manage inventory better that way and maximize people's benefit by being able to select the things that they'll actually use. Big part of that was having a cooler and freezer with reach indoors where people could grab their frozen meats and other things that needed to be cooled, potentially going down the road of even having milk that people could have and kind of round out the food pantry in that way. So that requires, if we do go down that road for the cooler and freezer, a investment of, it's, I got an updated quote today. It's just under $45,300. Installation is included in the, the bid, the base bid from the contractor. That was already baked in to that dollar amount that they presented at the, at the opening of the bids. So that would all be taken care of. It would just be the purchase of the freezer and cooler unit. That's a big expense. My hope, as I also laid that out, is potentially look at some of our, we have, we have some great donors that have an affinity for the, the holiday events and supporting the food pantry. That's where they want to give their support. And my hope is that through some of these partners, we can defray some of this cost, if not all of it, moving forward, if we do decide to go down this road. But that would be something I would have to develop over a period of several months or even up to several months or a year to try to hopefully work on that. So there would be some upfront cost. But that's what I wanted to present to the board. Obviously, not the best news, but if we do go down that road, brand-new freezer, brand-new cooler, bought just for us with the warranty and everything that goes into having a new appliance. Everything's set up on the, on the concrete pads in the new building. Everything's laid, everything's ready to go. The drainage is there. If, if we do go down this road, if it's something we don't do or do later, it is, it is there. But like I said, I just wanted to present you with this information as it sits now.
The, the unit in question that you're proposing that we buy fits?
It does, it does fit, right? Because that's, because that was the, so the cooler that we have now that was donated was about just over two feet longer than what we need. So the question was, can we find a combination unit that would fit in the space? Because we were anticipating cutting down the cooler to whatever we needed. Will the new unit fit, and will it provide enough swing for pallets? And that's all been, Paul and I walked through. We've measured everything, the superintendent, the project manager, the Chris Ozinski, the owner of Integral, all they're walking through showed us the space. Obviously, pallet jacks can have, you know, tight rotation, but it's not really needed. The swing will be there. The width of the door, you can get pallets actually in the doors. So to be able to move food on pallets and store pallets in the cooler and freezer will be a benefit as well. So, yeah, everything fits. We walked through it. Everything's been taped out, measured, yeah.
And the goal is to go from a prepackaged setup to a shopping cart setup, a grocery store-type setup?
Yeah, I'd call it, I mean, and what they call it is a self-select, right? So going from a prepackaged food pantry to a self-select, which would be like a grocery-style shopping experience.
So until this happens, if it does, we're going to move what we have here and use that over there?
So we can, we can deal with anything. So the, what, now, I'll defer to Lisa and the others that are, help out in the food pantry. But I, to start, if we needed to use the equipment there, I would anticipate in the sorting room between the town hall and the food pantry, we would have to keep those residential units in the packing space, and then we would just have to come up with some kind of running system. Either when someone finishes their shopping, you know, all of their other canned goods and other things, you know, they come up to the front. We have a runner to get their frozen stuff and come back, or get their frozen right when they check in. We would, we can adapt to anything. I mean, we can come up with a system. We couldn't have those cool, we couldn't have those freezers out on the floor because they'd be open so much, they'd, they'd burn out. They couldn't, they'd have to work too hard to stay cool, so we'd have to have them out of the way of, you know, the client shopping. But we could come up, yeah, we could adapt to anything if we needed to. And, and probably some of the best equipment will come with us anyway, just in case there is a reason we need. We don't anticipate needing it if we have this cooler or freezer, but if we take a couple with us, it probably would.
The present equipment that you're talking about is non-industrial?
It's residential.
Residential, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and the motor, just the motors, and, and, you know, I mean, you could probably speak to this too. I mean, the opening, the constant opening, the, the motors just have to work hard to keep the temperature.
The, the equipment that was donated, what will be done with that?
So the, the storage company said they would try to sell it for us on consignment. My way of thinking is great. If, if they can do that, it was donated. I don't know how much value it is there. But he said he'd be willing to try to sell it on consignment. So we, we can go that route. At, at this point, it's unfortunate, but it's kind of one of those things where it's sunk money unless we get in a situation where we're fortunate enough, fortunate enough for someone to buy it. But my thought is, if we go this route, you just kind of have to cut our losses at that point.
How long would the, the type of new unit we're talking about, how long should that last?
That's a good question. I don't have, I don't have the answer. I don't, I, it was, it was discussed. I honestly do not remember.
But it would come with a warranty?
It would come with a warranty, and the conversation, just the general conversation with that would last a long time. I just don't remember what the years the superintendent put on it was.
So the superintendent, that's of the building project, is he?
Yeah, he, yeah, he's overseeing the project, yeah.
If, if you're potentially using our old equipment as a backup over there, or as an extra means of storage, not for the self-select, but just for additional storage, can you use that donated equipment for just backup storage?
The one that?
Is it too big, or does it not fit, or?
Oh, no, it wouldn't fit. Oh, no, it wouldn't fit. It, it wouldn't, well, two things, the, the, the cooler you mean that was donated?
Yeah.
Um, it wouldn't fit in this, the, um, sorting area. And then the, there's no drainage there either, it would need drainage and there's, there's no, the drainage isn't set up in the packing room. The only drainage that's set up in the packing room is for the sink that's going to be going in there.
So you don't have the infrastructure in place for that, but you could put the residential in there?
Absolutely, mm-hmm, yeah.
So how would the timing work if we bring over what we have?
Mm-hmm.
You try and get donors to help with the cost of this new one?
Mm-hmm.
And how long would that maybe take to get donors?
That's a big, that's a big if, and that's why, like I said, I wanted to be upfront and just say, it's a big if. Like I said, I have hopes that, I think we could defray some of it. How much? I don't know, um, and that's, like I said, it's the big if, and that would be kind of the capital outlay on our part and, and the hopes that we would recover some of that.
How soon do we need to make a decision on?
Oh, if, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Um, they said turnaround is, um, for, depending, four to six weeks, cause they have to deliver by freight and, um, because of the size, but, um, just, just based on their schedules, four to six weeks to arrive.
The, the, the refrigeration?
Yes, and they, they said, we asked about impacting any other, any construction timing, they said it could be the last thing that goes in. It doesn't have, it, it's, it's not like they would have to wait for that before they could do anything else. That could, that could be the last thing to go in if need be.
So four to six weeks is early to mid-January?
Mm-hmm.
And we're hoping to be in there in January?
So, at our meeting, I don't remember if I put that in the email, so, I had a come-to-Jesus meeting with them, they had already had on the, the updated schedule, January twenty-second was turnover. Um, they have some built-in padding in there, but now that we fixed that, we, I had nothing to do with it. Now that they fixed all of the, the sewer issues and the triple basin issues and the water supply issues under the concrete and the, um, that part of the garage where the town hall and food pantry will be, things are, things are flying now. The holidays is what's getting in the way now and what kicked it out to January, but they're moving now. Um, so January twenty-second, um, and I told them, look, we're not paying another mon- month of rent in February. So, and they said, no, we're, that is, where we're at right now is like a hard, hard date and they've been good communicators up to this point and, um, like I said, they hit some snags of some things that the village needed them to do and then coming in some broke, broken pipes under the concrete that slowed them down, but, um, I think they're, what it sounds like they needed to give themselves some additional time, cause the holidays can be tricky, but, yeah, January twenty-second is the hard date.
We could maybe put in the newsletter about this, um, unit and how we want to go to this new kind of food pantry and maybe we could?
No, I, I have, yeah.
Individual donors even.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I think that's a great idea. I mean, I think there's a lot of people that would, that see that as, as, as valuable. There, there's people have an affinity for doing, cause it's very tangible, they can see it, they, they know that they're helping individuals, they know how they're helping. Absolutely, we could do that. Um, it's the question of, do we want to put the upfront capital and, and, and make strides to recoup those funds or not is, is, is really the question, so.
So if we don't, then we just deal with the stuff we have now?
Mm-hmm.
I think we pretty much have to, I would say. I don't know.
Kind of a key to our new plan of being a...
Yeah, it's, it's a new building too, so it's...
I think I'd rather have it in there before we open up, rather than you have to wait for them to bring it in.
Yeah, I look at it as, the, having it donated is what, was a really great thing and all that stuff, but, you know, if you're gonna build a new building or you're gonna put new facilities in there, you have to buy new equipment, so. It was something we were hoping we wouldn't have to do originally, but if we have to do it, that's what you have to do, cause it's what everybody has to do, has to do. So...
You need a motion to purchase it?
Um, I, I would, um, yeah. What's that? Yeah, so, um, it would need, yeah, it would need to be, um, yeah, so it would be an approval, um, I'm trying to think how I would put the language here, um... So, yeah, approv-, approval to purchase, uh, refrigeration and freezer unit for the new pantry, uh, new, uh, for the food pantry, um, just, um, not, uh, in, in the amount of forty-five thousand, three hundred dollars.
Including installation?
Installation, yeah, installation is in the base bid of the contract, of the, of the bid, yeah, the original bid.
And this is a cooler freezer, um, um, equipment? Or do, how do you call it? Do you, what do you say, cooler freezer or do you say something?
Yeah, refrigeration and freezer unit. It's a walk-in, uh, walk-in refrigeration and freezer unit. Co-, a combination unit.
Walk-in refrigerator freezer unit? And the, uh, the do-, the donated one was not a walk-in, was that?
No, it was a walk-in. It just, there was two things we, we thought we had, um...
It was just cooler?
It was, it was just a cooler, we asked about having it divided, we were under the, we were told that it could be divided, that was not the case, and we were told that it could be cut down and that turned out not to be the case, so.
You have a motion out there, you, or no?
No, I, I haven't, I don't have a motion.
Can, can you repeat the motion, please?
Sure. Um, so this would be a motion to approve the purchase of a combination refrigeration or freezer unit, uh, for the food pantry in amount of forty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. I'll make the, I'll make the motion, if it helps.
I'll second it.
Okay, made by Supervisor Sweeney, seconded by Trustee Ingraffia. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nuredowski.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye, okay, motion carries. Uh, there's no executive session, um, matters, uh, so I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Nuredowski. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Shag bar.
All right.